Do you plan to speak or respond? We can start the hearing. If you still need to sign in, please go ahead and do so. We're going to go ahead and start. My name is Mike Duffy. I'm hearing officer for the Department of Local Government Finance. Assistant today will be Dave Maruza. He's also hearing officer for the department. We are here today to conduct and administer a hearing pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana. It's found in Indiana Code Section 6-1.1-41-7. This hearing is being held because at least fifty verified taxpayers timely filed an objection to the city's reestablishment of its cumulative capital development fund. Notice of the time and place of this hearing was given to the county auditor. The first ten taxpayers who came here on petition before the statute. The following order presentation will be used today. First, evidence both written or oral will be presented by those objecting. Please present your written evidence to Dave who is assisting me. Copies of written evidence must be made available by those presenting it to the opposite side immediately after the hearing. All evidence will be cataloged and becomes part of the record of proceedings. Second, evidence both written or oral will be presented by those in favor. This is also the time for those in support of the CCD fund to rebuttal the issues raised by the objectors. Third, rebuttal evidence may then be presented by the objectors. Rebuttal evidence will be limited to the issues raised by those in favor of the proposed CCD fund. Those attempting to raise new issues during their rebuttal period will be stopped. The following general procedures will be observed during the hearing. First, this hearing is being audiotaped. Please speak loudly and clearly so that we may record your comments with the record. There's a microphone up on the podium there. One person at a time will be recognized to present evidence. Step to the podium, state your name and address before offering comments. Ladies Director, Commandant, and the hearing officers, if they may be recorded, you must repeat your name and address every time that you speak. Expect all speakers to be truthful and say only those facts of which they have personal knowledge. Keep all comments focused on the main issues before us today. Those attempting to raise issues unrelated to the CCD fund will be interrupted and asked to refocus. If the speaker continues to raise unrelated issues, the speaker will be required immediately to conclude this of her comments. Avoid repeating comments that have been offered by previous speakers. Issues he would only be presenting once to be considered. Economy parties to each speaker that all may be heard. You know, an applaud or speak out of turn will serve no purpose. The eventual proceedings are disrupted. I mean recess the hearings and order may be restored. If order is not restored, the hearing will be concluded. Audience members may not ask questions at first and testify under vice versa. Please hearing officers will seek clarification as necessary. It is the responsibility of those offering testimony to raise issues and provide supporting evidence. And finally, do not come up to us after the hearing to make comments. Please make all comments during the designated time for doing so. Also, we cannot answer any questions. We are simply here to collect evidence and testimony. Are there any questions about how the hearing will be conducted? All right? If not, those objecting to the proposed CCD fund will now be recognized for testimony. Is there someone who'd like to go first? Go ahead first.
My name is Marshall. I live here in Greensburg, 704 West Main Street. And I'm here to talk about cumulative cap. And mostly about the quote from the mayor. Is that your first name?
Sure.
Okay. On July ninth, in the local paper here in Greensburg, the News, this quote was put out by the mayor on the amount of the $144,734.12 that he expected to receive from putting forward his cumulative cap tax. Okay? And the quote is, "This has been a long involved process," the program said. "We've had to do a budget for how we use the extra money." Well, I could talk to the city attorney. He gave me in writing and said, "There is no budget for this money." Also, in this article, he says, "This money will help us do things for taxpayers. That's what matters most. It's their money, and we're legally bound to use it for their benefit." Well, if it's our money, why didn't we know about it? I went around and knocked on a lot of doors, and almost ninety-eight percent, I found two people that, all the signatures I got, that actually knew about the cumulative cap, cap tax. Nobody knew anything about it. So I'm here to register that. I really want to thank all the people that helped me. They did a wonderful job, kept me motivated. Things really turned around when Christine Townsend put her letter through the editor. I got all kinds of signatures from that. The rumor about doubling the taxes, I did say that at first. I was trying to sell this thing. Okay, that was my first day, and that would be six signatures. Okay, but we turned in eighty-four. And they've all been verified by the county clerk. So if they want to take those six off, we still have the remainder of seventy-seven. Okay? But after the first day, I reread it, and I did not accept. I did it wrong. Okay, I want to just take that out and put it out there right now. What I did do is I started showing the people I was going around and collecting signatures from, the remonstrance sheet. Let them read it themselves and only answer the questions when they asked. Okay, it worked out better. I wasn't looked at as a salesman, per se. How I got involved in cumulative cap tax was, I was upset. I wasn't upset, I just wanted to know more information about a roadway that they were planning to build. When I got involved with the cumulative cap, by watching videos from Jean through YouTube, that she sends to me every, every, like, every day I get one. She's a busy woman. And that's basically it. I welcome everybody else to get up here and state why they don't want it. I'm a renter, doesn't matter. You know, more taxes go up, my rent goes down. Right now, I'm almost guaranteed the same rent for five years. You know, and then after that, they might reassess it. I'll take that issue on the table, too. So if you have any questions for me? Okay? Then I could submit forms to you, right?
Yeah, we'll have seven days from the date of this hearing if someone wants to submit a letter or other testimony, evidence they can do there.
Right, I will. Thank you.
Are there any other objectors who want to speak?
My name is Jean Johanningman. I live at 136 West Central, Greensburg, Indiana. I also have a business at 119 North Broadway here in Greensburg that we pay taxes on. Our city government has passed in two special meetings this increase to the maximum rate on cumulative cap development tax, which is on our property tax. There have been various reasons given for this increase. The primary reason that the state passed circuit breaker cap is reduce potential funding for the city of Greensburg that they received. The mayor also stated in the July ninth, 2013 Greensburg Daily News article, that they had to do a budget of how they will use this extra money. In the same article, the mayor says, and I quote, "Cumulative capital development tax money must be used towards municipal projects, towards improving the city in important projects. We're talking about the maintenance of the city hall and other structures. This money goes towards maintaining city equipment, improving buildings and other infrastructure. We might use this money, for instance, to pave roads. This money will help us do things for the taxpayers. That's what matters most. It's their money, and we're legally bound to use it for their benefit." In the same newspaper article, the mayor also states, and I quote, "For anyone to say that these additional tax monies from this increase to the cum cap development fund will be used to purchase land for the airport expansion, it's an untrue statement, plain and simple. It borders on malicious. That will not happen. This increase has nothing to do with the airport expansion whatsoever." In the Thursday, July 25th, 2013 Greensburg Daily News article, the mayor and Brandon Robbins, financial consultant with 3D Financial Group of Seymour, said the following. Herbert also countered rumors that the increased CCDFT money would be used to circumvent the state's circuit breaker law. According to Robbins, the circuit breaker was implemented sometime in 2008 or '09 and places a cap on the amount of property taxes any given property owner can be required to pay. "We cannot by law," Herbert said, "circumvent the circuit breaker. Once a taxpayer hits a certain amount established by the circuit breaker, we cannot collect any further taxes from them." Remonstrance form, and I have enclosed a copy with the information that I'll give you after the meeting, does not say it will circumvent the circuit breaker law. It says that if the cum cap property tax increase is being increased because of the effects of the circuit breaker cap. Interpretation, the cap has reduced potential revenues for the city, and the cum cap development tax would gain revenue for the city. This tax increase does not circumvent the circuit breaker tax law. It only circumvents the positive effects for the taxpayer of why this property tax was capped, which was for property tax relief. I have enclosed a copy handed to me by the mayor at one of the meetings titled, "City of Greensburg Circuit Breaker Taxpayer Impact: Cumulative Cap Development Fund Impact." Let's start with the circuit breaker effects potentially shorting the city of Greensburg funding. The DLGF has a 2013 Circuit Breaker Caps Fact Sheet, which states in it the following, "Circuit breaker caps are one of the many forms of property tax relief offered to various types of property." It also says, "Property tax rate increases or decreases are a direct result of local spending." I object to this tax being increased in this very tough economy that is hurting a whole lot of our local taxpayers. And to emphasize on that just a little bit more, Monday night at one of the city meetings, the Kids Closet made the statement that sixty percent of our children in the schools are on reduced or free lunches. Gleaners, there was an article in the front of the newspaper, they are also implementing an additional program for the seniors that are on a fixed income because they're not eating properly. I think this witnesses to what's really happening in a lot of levels of our community. We have already had our assessments vastly increased, and to add this on top of that, no matter how large or small of increase is realized, in the current economy totally negates the original benevolent effect of the state's efforts to provide property tax relief. The answer for me as a taxpayer, stop the spending. When we are having a hard time financially in our personal lives, what do we do? We cut our budgets and do with less. Government needs to start exercising the same action on half the taxpayers. This tax increase is but one small symptom of what is wrong with our government from the bottom all the way up to the federal level. The taxpayers have to start standing up and objecting to any tax increases, no matter how large or small, in the economic climate we are currently faced with, in the total debt our country as a whole is in. When I think back to the last three or four city administrations for our city of Greensburg, I cannot think of one of those administrations that have conducted or proposed as many projects as this current administration. There have been new and never had before positions hired, new vehicles purchased, new buildings built. In this extremely poor economy, why is this happening? We have had the Lincoln Street improvement, including the unneeded landscaping, over a $5 million implicit improvement in our water system, which has not provided a badly needed new source, but merely attempts to take more off of our current sources. There is the landscaping project on the downtown square for one side of the square that no one thought was necessary, and now needs funding to finish the other sides to match. Then there is the railroad bridge drainage project, which is one I think was truly needed. New water meters, another needed project. Then there is the proposed $32 million over the next twenty-year airport expansion plan that there has been no vote on, and people do not support the current plan, but would like to see the dollars invested in a regional pursuit at a new location to get the best bang for the buck. Why? Because no return on investment analysis has been performed to prove the need and scope of this project. Another thing about the airport, in the city budget, they show a figure of $80,000 for the airport, and yet when I've been talking to them, they supposedly are not using this money. If they're not using this money, and this alignment has been the same for 2012, 2013, and is proposed for 2014, why isn't that cut? If they need to keep them in the budget, cut it down to a dollar. There's $79,000 and some odd cents saved right there. And to top things off, there is the $16 million, $19 million Veterans Parkway Road Expansion that the city is determined to build in three phases, hoping that by paying for Phase One, that the state will give them money towards that endeavor, when the state is not taking any new projects for the foreseeable future. Then at the various meetings, we have hired new personnel, renovated an office for new positions, hired, and in many of the departments purchased many new vehicles. Many of these projects are being done, and money's spent in the name of economic development, when we do not, according to an engineer for rural water on the front page of the Greensburg Daily News, have enough water for future economic development. And I have included a copy of that newspaper article with my information also. I could understand all of these projects and other expenditures if we were in an economy of about ten years ago, but not in today's climate. And even then, what are the priorities of this money? Are the priorities needs, or are they wants? In this economic climate, it is extremely important that monies obtained be spent in the best way to invest them on behalf of the taxpayers. How are all of the described and proposed projects fitting to what we do not have, the quantity and quality of water for future economic development, as stated by the engineer for rural water? The state of Indiana seems to be doing their part, is they have put in place the circuit breaker cap and suspended any new end dot project grants for the foreseeable future. But why isn't our local government doing the same? Another impacting article that I have enclosed with my information is an Indy Star article dated July 23rd, 2013, which discusses the effects of the state of Indiana suspending technology startups. The state has, for a number of years, given matching grants to companies that won research awards from the federal Small Business Innovation Research Program. Companies interviewed in this article are thinking of moving out of state because of this action. And yet, in this economy, I can totally understand why this program may not be giving out money right now. While the intent is good for the purpose of these funds that were utilized for, it takes having the money to fund all. And when you don't have it, you have to cut your spending. Actions like cutting of spending need to be strongly supported and trickled down in all of our government. I know it is not easy to cut spending, as we all have to do that when we don't have the income to provide it in our personal lives. I also know that it is very easy to keep spending when it does not come from your checkbook, but from the taxpayer's checkbook. As a local taxpayer, I am merely asking you deny this tax increase. Thank you.
Any other objectors who want to speak? All right, then, those in favor of the proposed CCD fund may now testify. I'd like to point out to those in favor that this is now the time to rebuttal issues and evidence presented by the objectors. Would anyone else would like to speak in favor of the proposed fund?
Good morning. My name is Eric Reedy with 3D Financial Group out of Seymour, Indiana. I've handed out to you a booklet. There are copies of it at the sign-in table. If you want, I'll just go over the tabs that are in the booklet. The purpose of establishing the cum cap development fund is found in 36-9-15.5, and the procedures for the establishment are found in 6-1.1-41. The first statute authorizes the uses of the municipal CCD fund and the tax rate that may be imposed. The city will only use, the CCD fund is outlined in this statute, and the city will only levy the maximum rate of five cents as outlined in the statute. 6-1.1-41 establishes the procedures for implementing the fund. The city followed the necessary procedures in establishing the fund. The report outlines these procedures on page five. The next page on the establishment of the CCD fund, this is an integral part of funding the city's capital needs in the upcoming years. Approximately $100,000 in increased revenue is projected to be received in the CCD fund due to the reestablishment. Now, there will be another $30,000 to $40,000 in income taxes that's derived off of the property tax levy that will go into the city's operating funds. Minimum tax impact, the average annual impact to the taxpayers listed on the first page of the remonstrance petition is projected to be $7.03. The report outlines these findings on page seven of the report. The city last established the CCD in 1985, with taxes payable in 1986. The CCD rate was five cents in '86, and has dropped to $2.64 in pay 2013 due to reassessment and trending adjustments. That council ordinance is 85-2. The next page, why is a cum cap development fund established? Why is it necessary? The average annual capital improvement needs. Each city department head has developed a six-year plan, and that six-year plan is summarized below. The street department has an average over the next six years of $178,079 for additional equipment, building for storage, repairs to existing equipment. Stormwater, $100,000 a year for drainage projects. Sanitation, $56,899. Additional equipment, major repairs to existing equipment, building for equipment. The police, $232,500 for ACAD, RMS system, radio consoles, phone system, police station updates, police vehicles. Fire, $243,833. Station repairs that are needed, new fire truck, seal coating for the parking lot. These necessary purchases will cost, on average, approximately $811,000 annually over the next six years. Note, even though the statute allows airport funding, there are no plans to fund the airport with CCD money, as the airport is self-sufficient. No Veterans Way is funded through TIF money, not through the city budget. Next page, process taken to establish the CCD fund. See attached documents. The mayor proposed the establishment of the CCD fund. Then the city council reviews it, discusses, and approves the establishment. Notice must be properly given, and that was done. According to the proof of publication, the Greensburg Daily News and the Greensburg Times, notice was published twice on May 31st and again on June 7th. Proper public hearing was held. The notice states the hearing was held on June 10th. The ordinance was adopted on June 17th. Notice of adoption was then published. According to the proof of publication from the two previously mentioned newspapers, the notice was published on June 21st. And then finally, the last step would be for the DLGF to set the remonstrance hearing, which is today. The next page is a tax rate comparison. The city of Greensburg has the lowest tax rate in comparison to ten other nearby cities, and the city's tax rate this year is 93.67 cents. The average is nearly $1.40, so the variance is about 46 cents. Greensburg is lower than these others. Who we have listed, Columbus, Newcastle, Seymour, North Vernon, Franklin, Bedford, Martinsville, Rushville, Salem, Richmond, Bloomington. Next page, tax impact to taxpayers. See attached documents. The following are the projected annual impacts on the first 11 to 12 taxpayers on the remonstrance list. Note, there are two marriages, so there's nine impacts. The first one that's listed, there's no impact, as they already have the tax cap. It's a non-homestead property, so it's not in the 1% tax cap. The next one is $2.06 annually, $12.30 annually, $16.73 annually, $9.15 annually, $3.32 annually, $9.53 annually, $5.58 annually, and $4.58. So the average for those above is $7.03 for this request. Next page, CCD fund remonstrance petition. Also see attached document. Just a couple of things that the city wanted to discuss here. As stated in the remonstrance petition, accusations were, number one, object to the tax increase due to the fact that it is being increased because of circuit breaker effects according to our city government. The response, the city is requesting the additional rate to assist in funding its capital improvements plan. The city has one of the lowest city tax rates, and also one of the lowest total taxing district rates. Therefore, the circuit breaker for our city is among the lowest in our area. Number two, the petition states the circuit breaker cap was to help property owners in these tough economic times, so benefits increase as the taxpayers' incomes decline. This increase is negating the benevolent intent of this action. Response, the circuit breaker is the law of the state of Indiana and sets property tax caps for all property classifications in the state. The city supports the circuit breaker law and must annually adjust its budgets accordingly. I think as the two DLGF hearing officers know, when any unit of government in the state of Indiana receives its budget order, the budget order doesn't know what the circuit breaker is at the time, because you don't know that until a billing abstract comes out. But the DLGF budget order says you have to make an adjustment for the circuit breaker once you know what it is. The city is well aware of that fact and must annually adjust its budget for that once it is known. The last thing on the petition states, "We also object to the fact that tax can be used for a variety of reasons. Of those is for acquisition of land, for the proposed airport expansion, which we taxpayers also object to." Response, 36-9-15.5-2 is noted on page two, outlines the legal uses of the CCD fund. And even though the statute allows for airport funding, there are no plans to fund the airport, again, as it is self-sufficient. And again, I would mention that the other major thing, Veterans Parkway, that is funded by TIF. I think another one I heard was a water project, and of course, that's not part of property taxes, that's water rates and charges. Legal notices is in the next tab. So we have attached the notice of adoptions out of both newspapers, and the notice of the public hearing that's required by law. The next page is the ordinance. We have attached ordinance number 2013-2, which was signed on June 17th. The tax impacts that was referred to is in the next tab. And then lastly is a copy of the remonstrance petition. And that concludes my presentation.
Just one question for you. What was the motivating factor for establishing the fund?
The motivating factor was the city had many capital needs and simply don't have sufficient resources to fund those needs.
So the intention was not simply to offset circuit breaker losses?
No, they actually had needs for that money. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents who'd like to speak?
My name is Richard Fayette. I own a small manufacturing company that produces kitchen cabinet hardware at 814 East Randall Street in Greensburg, Indiana. We pay property taxes on the equipment, and we also pay the property taxes on the building. I also own a home at 142 West Second Street in the city of Greensburg. As a business owner, I'm against anything that's going to add to the cost of doing business. And obviously, when property taxes go up, it does not help me produce more divorce lives. It does not do anything to help the cost of goods sold. It simply increases my expenses. However, that being said, when in the middle of winter, I need to get to the plant, I need to have the city have the roads plowed, they have to have the equipment, it has to be properly maintained, and the street department needs the money to be able to make sure that they're able to get my employees to work. Okay, my customers in California and in Florida don't have a snowstorm, okay? They expect somebody to be there to answer their calls, to take their orders, and to ship their product. The city provides services to us, not just, you know, snow plowing. They need equipment. As a homeowner, I, four times a year minimally, I will put limbs and debris out in my lawn, and I want the city to pick it up. Recently, the city took out a service in 1970s, I think it was a C65 GMC that they were using to haul a chipper, and they modified a dump truck to be able to do it, however, it doesn't haul as much. And being a business owner, I understand that if you have to make three trips instead of one, then your gas price expenses is going to go up, and they need to replace that truck. Being a business owner, I have noticed over the past eight years a tremendous increase in the cost of equipment and in the cost of maintenance. I had a Ford truck go down last week, and they traced the problem to a little valve called a priority valve in the hydraulic pump. In the day, it used to be $26 seal kit or a $90 valve. However, there's one company that makes that part. However, there's one company that makes that part, so it cost me a thousand dollars for a new hydraulic pump. The city is faced with the same problems in maintaining their equipment. And I believe that it is important that all of the city departments have enough money to fund their capital expenses, okay? I don't want an excuse that a snowplow was taken out of service and that's the reason, you know, my employees weren't able to work. Okay, I don't think it's a good excuse to have something wrong with a fire truck when your house is burning down. I don't think it's a good excuse that, you know, the police department doesn't have funding for technology to find the people that broke into my building. I understand, you know, what has happened over the years in property tax relief, and I think it's a great thing. However, from a business perspective, it's very hard to manage the city of Greensburg when you don't have as much funds as you used to have. And if I were going to take over this city in three or four years, I would want it to be healthy, I would want it to be in good condition, and I wouldn't want to manage, to have to come in and manage something that was run down. I believe that there are sufficient checks and balances in place, okay? Department of Local Government Finance reviews the budget. There has been locally referendums for a couple of county school projects, okay, that did not pass. I think taxpayers, because of legislation, have now more voice than they ever had before. And we're obviously here today expressing our opinions. So I think there's checks and balances, but the reality of the situation is that expenses are going up. It's costing you more for that gallon of gas. It's costing you more for that cubic foot of natural gas. It's costing more to make water every day. And if you are in a position where you cannot take in more revenue, then you are already in a position where you're having to cut somewhere. And I don't think there's anybody that wants to go without their services. I mean, I think there's a lot of taxpayers who pay for cable TV and internet every month, which is a need, that are screaming about a seven-dollar annual increase to fund the departments of public work. And to me, that's just, I, as a business owner and as a taxpayer, I do not think this is an unreasonable increase. I am on the TIFF board and I've been following some of the projects that were cited earlier. Lincoln Street was a TIFF project, okay? Veterans Way that they're talking about is a TIFF project. And you could argue all day long about whether you like the Indiana code and the way TIFF is handled, but the bottom line is that those projects were funded with TIFF revenue. As far as the city taking on a lot of new projects, yes, they have. But we've been aggressively getting funding for projects from the, from Indiana and from the federal government. A lot of those projects were related to the hundred-year flood that we had and trying to help people that needed better drainage and that, you know, property was damaged. And I think there's been tremendous effort to try to make this a better community by this administration and doing so without more money. I mean, I'm fifty-eight years old, I'm getting ready to get into that fixed income mode. And the city, most municipalities have been on a fixed income mode for quite some time since the circuit breaker was passed. Now, I know our governor is trying to give us back some of our state income tax money. That was one of his campaign promises. Whether it happens or not, I don't know, but that's his intent. And I've always been one that felt I would prefer to have more money locally that is managed by people I elect than to have it go to the state and the federal government and then have us compete for grants to get it back. And that's more the way the current system works, where you have to, you know, compete with four or five other cities. There was some talk about the landscaping things on Lincoln Street. Well, if you know the whole story, that's transportation enhancement, and I'm sure you guys understand how those funds must be used and what they have to be used for. And our local match was paid for because we paid a lot of money for engineering and that was accepted as a local match. So yes, there were some signs put up and there were some landscaping done that people thought was not necessary. However, we paid the taxes, and it's nice to finally get some of it back. And so some of the arguments made were, it's all just the way the numbers are run. I mean, you pay, you pay a million dollars in engineering and your local match is two-hundred-thousand for a transportation enhancement grant. You know, do you just cut your nose off and say, no, I'm not going to take that two-hundred-thousand dollars of grant money on this because it's not necessary when you've already paid your match? So some of that just didn't make logical sense not to take that money. So I am in faith, I don't think this is unreasonable, okay? I've got my bill right here for my sanitation, three fifty a month. That's what we pay to have our trash picked up and that's what we pay to have our recyclers picked up, although I think a lot of that is handled by the, paid for by the Solid Waste Management District. But that is unbelievably reasonable. I'm a businessman and I'll guarantee you that the city is losing money picking up our trash. But they have not, over the past four or five years, or ten years, you know, raised the rate to the level that many other municipalities have. So I think they are being frugal with their money. If I was the city executive, there would be a ten-dollar increase in the sanitation rate next week. So people would actually pay what it costs me to hire people and to maintain those trucks to go do, provide that service, because that's the way it works in the real world. So I think they have done, the city council and the executives have done what they can do. You know, some of the new departments that they were talking about earlier, yeah, we now have a city engineer. He saved us a ton of money. We used to pay money to HNTV like it was water. Okay, we, I used to go to TIFF meetings and, you know, every single month, there was a, you know, we were getting billed contract rates for engineering services. And the money we saved on Lincoln Street alone pays this guy's salary for forty years, we got a free ride. You know, it makes common sense to have somebody that is following all these projects through, that works for us. I mean, that's why businesses like mine hire engineers. If you're producing a product, if you're providing a service, you need to have an engineering staff, okay? So that's one of those new positions that we, some people believe we don't need. However, it's saving us money. It's, you know, he is qualified to do inspections. I mean, and we have some really good professional people in all of our city departments that can do inspections and that can do the engineering. We are blessed to have those qualified people, I believe. And I think that, instead of being a case of a government abuse, is a case of intellectual spending. I mean, we're spending money to pay this guy's salary instead of getting a bill for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from an engineering firm for a piece of paper that's really worth seventy thousand. So some of the issues that were raised, I don't, I don't agree with the fact, with the way they presented it in objection to the tax increase. I think more along the lines that those were good things that happened. I mean, the TIFF paying for Lincoln Street is much better than what we were doing before, which was digging up the road fifteen times a year to fix water leaks. And nobody ever looked at what it was costing because it just watered. You know, you lose a hundred thousand gallons, big deal, but it costs money to produce that water. It's not free. And then I used to drive up Lincoln Street, and I don't know how many of these people did, but, you know, you couldn't drive up, it looks like a checkerboard, because there were so many places it was dug up because the water line was under the road, and every time there was a leak, they would dig the road down. It's, it is actually pleasant now to drive up Lincoln Street, and that was TIFF money once again, which means the city didn't have to spend property tax money to continue to repair. So there's an offset there. And, you know, if you look at the big picture and all the offsets, I think that was a win-win situation for the community. So I support the increase. I do not think it's unreasonable, and I believe that that money will be used to do things like replace that nineteen-seventies GNCC sixty-five so you can actually start making one trip instead of three, and you won't have to spend three times the gas to do the job. Those are the kind of things I have been told that money will be used for. And I called and talked to department head and tried to get some information from them and, you know, I talked to one gentleman and he said, yes, he presented a long-term budget that he could provide if I wanted to request public documents showing out to like two thousand and fifteen, you know, some of the capital improvements he wanted. So, I mean, as a taxpayer, if you want that information and you're willing to follow the procedures with Indiana Public Access, you can get all the information you want. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other proponents who want to speak?
My name is Gary Herbert, Mayor of the city of Greensburg, sixteen-twenty-five North Clark Street, Greensburg, Indiana. Been resident there for about thirty-three years. The reason to increase the CCD tax, you've heard all of that, this is not a new ordinance or tax. This is an existing tax that was formed by administrations many years ago, nineteen-eighty-five, approved by state. I too am a taxpayer, as one of these residents, most of these residents here are. I don't like my taxes at all. I dealt with the county this year to have my assessment lower. It went from about fifty percent to a twelve-point-four percent increase. It is, taxes is a necessity, as much as we dislike it, it has to happen. We are asking for this to be increased for public safety, for improving the city of Greensburg and all of its entities. This, as stated in Greensburg Daily News as well, by an article, that the mayor is wanting to double your property tax. That's one of the reasons that so many people are so overwhelmingly willing to sign a petition. I only had the opportunity to speak to a couple of them, and I think things weren't clear to them, clearly to them. You know, I was asked a question at a student, a government class at the high school, high school. We want our city to grow. I was asked, how large do you want City of Greensburg to grow? And my answer to her was, as big as it takes for you after going to college and come back home to your parents, your grandparents, and raise a family. We have enough jobs there, and I think that's what we should stop for. So I am guilty, as accused, of being proactive. We've done many things in preparing Greensburg for the future. There's many things that we are working on that is not privy to the public at this time, but will be in the future. This ordinance and the increasing of the funds was proposed to the city council, which was unanimously approved by the council. I also support what they've done. I proposed it, I support the council on their actions. It's a necessity, like I said once again. You know, the mayor did not double property tax, neither can the council. Not hit one time. That takes many, many, many years. You know, what do we, how do we reduce spending? Do we say, okay, trash pickup once a month? Do we say, limb grinding that we, the city furnishes offers once a month? Do we reduce public safety with fire and police? No, I say no for all of those statements. We don't. Our residents' safety is critical. Their well-being is critical. Our, their services that we, the city of Greensburg offers are very reasonable, such as the gentleman here stated on your trash pickup, three hours a month. So I, one I want to make is, council has approved this, I support it, we all see the necessity of City of Greensburg to continue to grow. Thank you.
Any other proponents who'd like to speak? Okay. At this time then, the rebuttal by the objectors may be offered. Keep in mind, donor matters will be allowed. So again, if you want to rebut anything that was raised, this is the opportunity for objectors to do that.
I go back to this article where the mayor says that he's doing all this for the public. And it says, this money will help us do things for taxpayers, and that's what matters most. It's their money and we're looking down to use it for our benefit. Okay, and then it gets up there and he's quoting stuff about the TIFF board. Well, I understand the TIFF board is going to fund this, but how much money does the TIFF board have? In their article, the TIFF board has a one-and-a-half-million dollars allocated for Veterans Way. They're already, and that estimated, it's going to cost nine-million dollars just to do phase one. It's a three-phase project. So when is, how long is it going to take to do phase one? How long is it going to take to do phase two and phase three? I asked for those things, and just like you got through saying, you said some of this stuff is not privy to us. Well, that's the letter I got back from the city attorney. I asked for the same thing. I asked for, if they've got a road built, where are the dimensions? How's their road going to go? I asked for the stats on that. Any drawings they might have? What they gave me was a photo, aerial photo, showing the route. Doesn't give the estimates. It doesn't give the, like, how many feet of the road, if it's going to be a two-lane, a three-lane, a four-lane. Okay, I asked for that, I was denied that, okay? I also asked for information on the TIFF project, and they're telling me over here in this pamphlet, which I'm allowed to get on these pamphlets? Okay. Well, some of the stuff that's in there is the same stuff I asked for, and now why is it available? You know, I just questioned those things. I especially questioned this Veterans Way. I'm like Gene, I'm going about this, I'm not even involved in the airport thing, other than I don't want them taking property out there by eminent domain, and are we going to be taking property for Veterans Way with eminent domain? What if some of those people don't want to get their property done? Are they going to take it by eminent domain again? I can't find that out. So I wanted to bring that up, and also I want to encourage the people here that's against this tax to get up, just make a simple statement if they could, you know, that they're against the tax. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Gene Johanny, Glenn One Thirty-Six, West Central. Somebody's going to have to start cutting off their nose to spite their face. When our federal government is trillions in debt, and that affects our state government, the state, that affects the money the state gives us for funding. And while I understand the needs of a city, there are several things around here that have not been needs. That renovation project in front of my business that they put in on one side and now can't afford to do the other three sides was not a need. And I have on videotape where they bought a thirty-some-thousand-dollar bobcat, and I have the street commissioner stating they bought this bobcat to remove snow because of the design of what was put on our side of the square. There are expenditures, for instance, this TIFF, TIFF Veterans Boulevard, what the TIFF, and they're having a meeting tonight, by the way, and that meeting, they're having a public hearing on their plan. The plan is not just Veterans Boulevard, but other projects associated with Veterans Boulevard. And according to what was said in one of their meetings, the life of the TIFF district may not have enough money to fund this all. They're hoping by doing phase one that the state might kick in some money, but we know that the state has said twenty-eighteen is the year I'm hearing now before any funding would be available. So are we going to build? So are we going to build a road to nowhere, basically? This airport, this eighty thousand dollars that's in the city budget that they say they never use? Cut it down to a dollar, save that money for the taxpayers. But are they accumulating these funds and can they accumulate these funds to start this process off if they get this grant? And what I'm asking too is, if this, if these funds, these are taxpayers' funds, if they're accumulating them to do this, will that make it subject to remonstrance? The drainage project, I stated I supported that. Back when this, as the mayor pointed out, this tax was originally implemented, they were much better times. To increase it now to the maximum during this economy, I'm not for it. We all have to start looking as to where we can cut. And as far as hiring the engineer position, I have nothing against Mr. Murray. He's a very nice individual. But I will say that engineers look for projects. That validates their employment. Searching for projects, you search for grants. This complicates everything from the federal level to the state level to the local level. We have to start somewhere. While there may be very many people that are doing just fine in this room right now, I think you've got some letters that testify there are people who are not. And I think the statistics that were quoted by the kids closet and by cleaners about the seniors indicate that there are people that are hurting right now. We have to start doing what is benevolent for the whole, not just coveting for ourselves. Any questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other objectors who'd like to rebuttal?